That's a horrible, that's a rough one. They take the vein from the leg?
No, no, no.
Okay. We could all stand and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now we'll take a moment of silence to recognize and reflect upon the men and women who are serving abroad and serving military in our country and our first responders. Okay, we would like to welcome everyone to today's workshop. We'll be discussing the county attorney candidate applications and we'll be having a presentation regarding animal control. I think the first up will be our county attorney candidate application discussion, and that will be led by Mr. Salinas. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Commissioners, Jorge Salinas, Deputy County Administrator. Well, that's coming up. Last meeting, the direction from the board, and we made a request to provide three potential candidates for interview for the position of county attorney. Each of the commissioners send in their information. I have it here on a spreadsheet. We'll populate it, and then we can have the discussion. So Commissioner Hanson, what we do is Commissioner Hanson wanted to interview Sean Moylan, Michael Rodriguez, and Scott McHenry. So I just put a one next to each one of these. Vice Chair Pennington, Scott McHenry, Adriani Treasure, and William Spilias?
He's on the bottom there.
Okay, so we have. Can I print it? Okay. Commissioner Richardson has Scott McHenry, Michael Rodriguez, and William Spilias? Commissioner Hanson, I mean Commissioner Danz, Chair Danz, just want to read his. Says, "Consistent with my comments at the May 28th workshop, I do not have any names to forward for the interview for county attorney's position except for our current deputy county attorney, Sean Moylan. I will be open to interviewing the candidates that the commissioners agree during the workshop." And he's just apologizing for not being, apologizing for not being in the workshop due to his medical procedure. And we just put Sean Moylan for him. He just picked one.
She picked McHenry.
Mm-hmm.
This shows Commissioner Carney's picking.
Yeah, Andrea, Sean, and Michael. Okay, so here's the results. We have the three for Michael Rodriguez, three for Scott McHenry, three for Sean Moylan. We have two for Adriana Treasure, and we have two for William Spilias.
Chair, may I ask, was it the intent to leave Sean out? I'm hearing two things going on here. I didn't, I don't think everyone, I think some of us thought that Sean was an automatic interview. Is that true or not?
No, we wanted everybody to provide the names of the ones you, ones selected, yeah, for interviews.
So was that in your intent? Was that the intent?
You're asking me if it was my intent?
I'm asking the other two commissioners that are here.
Right, it's okay though. As you see, Mr. Moylan would rise into one of the three spots for interview purposes to begin with. So we could, if everyone's okay with this list, I think we chose three to proceed with interviews, correct?
I think there's some confusion as to how some of us responded to the email, okay? And to the directions, because we've got two different people giving us two different directions. So I can give you reason as to why, but that's not really important. I know Mr. Moylan, and I know that I'll be able to speak to him on my leisure. I don't know what the capacity is of this request to meet with them. I know him, so do I want to meet with others to, for my own personal opportunities to get to know the most out of every candidate, rather than just assume.
This is the, this will be a formal interview. We're going to be sending out to each of the candidates some preliminary questions for you to evaluate, and then we'll have a one-on-one interview with the candidates that you select today. That's the first part of the process. And then there will be a meet and greet with the community, and then we'll have an open session for the commissioners to all ask questions together for the candidates. So if you want to include Sean, it's already included based on the votes, so it's already covered, but.
Could we add more to it as the question?
The commissioners can do whatever they're pleased.
If there's a consensus, too.
Well, that's up to the consensus then, isn't it?
I'll ask you, is there, in addition to Sean, leaving Sean there, do we just want to leave it with those three, or would you like to add?
Or you want to add, you can interview five, you have five here.
We have five people.
This board. You can interview three. It's up to the commissioners.
If I had left Sean out because I thought he was an automatic, the person that I would have put in his place is already on the list and is an interviewee, so I have no desire to change any of the standings that have, that are in front of us. Thank you.
That's good.
We can move through, okay, so we'll move forward with these three.
Three threes.
And while leaving the requisition open in the interim, right? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what we have is, we were planning to have the 15 as a potential date for interviews. I believe that either Lucy or Rose had sent out or asked some questions about that date, if there was some availability for the commissioners.
Fine, thank you.
Yeah, okay. 15th of July.
So the tentative is July 15th, in person, or possibly by Zoom for, I think, is one out of state. I can't recall, but.
We were planning to bring everybody here, so they have the same opportunity to have face-to-face.
Okay, all right.
I did get a call from somebody. They said they didn't quite understand whether the end date to apply was Jan, July 1st, or July 15th, but I thought we were extending, we're keeping it open until hire.
Yeah, it's open. Anybody can apply. This is just.
This is the first round of reviews.
Of interviews, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure, because they were questioning, how does this work, and what is that doing? And so I want to make sure where clarity, our clarity is there.
Yeah, the interview process is so open. We'll just continue to accumulate those, do the first screening by HR, and then continue to send it to the commissioners. If, at the end of this process, the first round of interviews, you're not completely satisfied, you would like to continue to look for candidates, we'll leave, we'll continue to leave it open. If you're satisfied, then you can, you know, just close it there and select your candidate there.
We're open until we're not open.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so to recap, we're moving forward with Michael Rodriguez, Sean Moylan, and I believe Scott McHenry for tentative interviews July 15th, where the public will be invited.
That is correct. We'll have one-on-one interviews with the commissioners. We'll have a meet and greet, and then at the end, we'll have an open session where the commissioners from the DIAS can actually interview as a group and decide to either elect somebody there or postpone it for the next meeting if you want to, want to do that.
All right. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah, it's tentative from 9:00 to 6:00. Hopefully, we can zero in on lessening that timeframe.
Yes, we'll have, since it's only three, we'll probably schedule it later in the day, and then continue to have a meet and greet around 4:00 or 5:00, and then have the session for your interviews later at 6:00.
Okay, that's good. Great, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, now we're moving on to our animal control presentation. I believe Ms. Petito will handle this.
We got wood.
Try not to be distracted by all the puppy pictures.
Don't start. I had to leave my puppy today. He didn't like it.
Well, thank you all for being here today as we continue the important discussion on animal control services in our community. This workshop serves as a follow-up to the workshop that we had on April 29th, where we were asked to begin evaluating some different scenarios. We're going to walk through each one of those. We've gathered some additional information. We've looked at some of the fiscal responsibilities, what would be required through various different delivery options, including the possibility of shifting from what I would consider outsourced to the county actually taking on the program. So we appreciate everybody's engagement up to this point. It's definitely been a collaborative event, and we'll go ahead and get started with today's presentation. So here's a look at the agenda. This, as I said, was a follow-up to the joint workshop that we had with the City of Palm Coast back in April. We were tasked with four different scenarios. One was to negotiate a one-year contract renewal with the Flagler Humane Society for animal control services. We also worked with City of Palm Coast to evaluate what it would look like if they were to perform those services for us. We also evaluated what that cost would be for Flagler County to bring that in-house and have us doing it. And then the fourth thing that we looked at was evaluating the cost to construct a new municipal animal shelter. So we're going to go over each one of these in a little bit more detail. So the first one is the one-year contract renewal. This would be with the current provider, Flagler Humane Society, beginning with a term that would be October 1st of this year, running through September 30th of 2026. Myself and Jorge, we met with Amy to go over their current contract, to look at the types of services that are provided, and then looking at any contract costs. They're providing animal control services for all types, whether it's domestic or non-domestic animals. They also provide shelter services and a spay and neuter program. When we met to talk about the contract costs, we were anticipating a 3% CPI increase on the animal control services. So essentially, it would be a slight increase of a little over $6,000 to that component. And then when we looked at the animal shelter services and that spay and neuter program, the spay and neuter program didn't have an increase, but where we looked at shelter services, that's the funding that you would pay for the days that the animals were there, if they came in dead on arrival, if they had various things done to them. There's some fees. There was a slight increase in some of those fees, primarily due to whatever the market increase was. I know it's hard to find somebody who's like, but I think when we were looking at this, we were looking at Halifax Humane Society, which operates down in Volusia, and what the cost, the going costs were for some of those services. Overall, that would be an increase of about $16,000 a year. There were some other slight changes. When we talked about the five-day hold on strays, we had talked potentially about changing it to a three-day hold for animals that are not identified. But if we were able to identify an animal, then it would stay with that five-day hold. And then when we were considering puppies and kittens, animals that are under six months of age, it's been their experience that typically those have been abandoned, that there's nobody coming to claim them. So what they would like to do is a 24-hour hold on those to get them adopted and not kept in a kennel for a necessary length of time. So that's kind of the contract changes that we talked about, but there were other issues that the board, in conjunction with Palm Coast, had mentioned. We talked about the bylaws, about the Humane Society making their bylaws public on their website. They did say that they would make those available. Documentation, when we met, we talked about increasing the documentation that's provided to us on a monthly basis to include more details, disposition of animals. There is an Exhibit B to the agreement that we're currently working on with Amy to provide more details. We talked about even the daily logs that your humane officers or animal control officers utilize. There was another conversation that we had here about background checks. Level-two background checks would be done on animal control officers. All others, including volunteers, would receive a level-one background check. Those can be provided through the sheriff's office. The reason why not everybody would have the level-two is strictly cost. The cost to actually do those background checks could be cost prohibitive. And then we talked about pet sheltering during emergencies. This was actually something that came at the request of Jonathan Lord, where he wanted to make sure their contract had spelled out that they would be providing some pet sheltering services during times of local state of emergencies. It allows us to be able to compensate or reimburse for some of those services. So FEMA would like to see, you know, if we're going to have, if we're going to pay them or reimburse them, they'd like to be able to point back to a contract that we have that puts that responsibility on them. So that was something we added. It's aside from what the board had mentioned. The other component that both the city and the county had talked about was board membership or representation on their board. What we had talked about was potentially two different options being provided. One would be a staff member appointed to their board. The other would be for an elected official that would act as the liaison to the Humane Society Board. So they wouldn't be a board member, but it would be a liaison where they could meet monthly. They can go over information that's provided. And we had a lengthy discussion about this. And I know Sean Moylan, the county attorney, had talked to their representative of their board, who happens to be an attorney. And there was some concern with whether or not having an elected official on their board would jeopardize the fact of them being a nonprofit. Well, I don't, I personally, I'm not an attorney, but I don't know that I believe that. But I do believe that potentially, and I'll use the example of SMA Healthcare, because I serve on their board. SMA Healthcare, as a board member, you have to sign an ethics and a confidentiality statement. We are presented with reports and different information that sometimes does include claims against SMA Healthcare. Potentially, if you had an elected official serving in that capacity, and what you do is supposed to be shared in the open, could that now open them up to not having that confidentiality? Because whatever information you receive is now going to have to become public record. That's where I see potentially there being a snag. In the case of SMA Healthcare, I serve on the Board of Directors. However, they do have elected officials that serve in a different capacity. They're more on the foundation. They're more on the fundraising and, you know, helping with financial interests, leveraging some of their political capital, if you will, to help further advance the organization. But what you see on the SMA Board, in addition to myself, City Manager Benell is on there. You also have a city manager from Ormond Beach, who's on the SMA Board with myself. So that way, our communities are represented, however, it's not an elected official. So it's kind of along that same guidelines of being able to maintain confidentiality. There is also a commitment that I have to give to SMA Healthcare, where I agree to use their federally qualified health centers. I have to receive an annual physical every other year. I have to give back in the way of fundraising and provide annual contributions to SMA. It's not something the county does. I do it personally. So for some of those same or similar reasons, this is why the makeup is what it is. They did provide two options, one for a staff member. When we met, I know Jorge Salinas, the deputy county administrator, he had volunteered. If we were to go down that road, that is something that interests him, that he would be willing to step up and do. So I just wanted to explain a little bit about the rationale. Sean can probably supplement a little bit about what I said.
Right. So they, Vincent Lyon, who's on their board, sent me an email with their concerns, and he proposed this alternative method that would still provide the transparency and accountability that this commission wants. And it could be a commissioner, or it could be Jorge, or a staff person who would be, rather than on their board, subject to their confidentiality rules and their requirement to make donations and volunteer, you would have monthly meetings with them, where they would show you their financial reports, intake reports, and address any other issues that come up during those monthly meetings. Those reports could be provided to this liaison ahead of time, so they could prepare. And that's about it, really, just to sum it up.
Mr. Moylan, the way it's worded here, would that staff member or elected official attend their actual monthly meetings, or would these be meetings with, with a liaison from there to talk about issues monomonthly?
Not part of their regular board meeting.
That you would not be a part of the regular board meeting?
Right. Because they, I think the concern is that there is confidential information that is, and then, and also the public records laws could be triggered.
Can I ask then? I sit on the Early Learning Coalition Board. I sit on several as a commissioner. That issue has never come up. I have signed confidentiality on both boards that I serve on. Juvenile, juveniles, whatever. So I don't understand the concern. I think it's a standard practice. Being a 501(c)(3), I hate to say it, but if they're not disclosing what and how they operate, then they're not fulfilling the obligations of being a 501(c)(3). There are reporting requirements as a 501(c)(3). It's not designed to be a closed network. It's designed to be an open network. I really don't care about this position personally as a commissioner or in my personal life, but I think they're making a lot more out of it than they need to. But that's my only comment at this point.
And I just hope you understand that Heidi and I here, we're just relaying the message that we received.
Mr. Moylan, I think somewhere.
You can give us your opinion as an attorney as to whether or not it exceeds.
Well, I don't think that they would lose their tax-exempt status. That part, that part doesn't register with me. I, I do understand their concern about making everything an open book, because nonprofits are allowed to have some information that is confidential. Even with SMA, I'm sure there's health information that's confidential. And so the public records aspect of it makes sense to me, that their concern is if you're a regular member of their board, anything and everything that's presented to you could be subject to a request by any member of the public, and they're trying to guard against that. There may be ways to work around it, perhaps with a nondisclosure agreement, but it would have to fit within a Florida statute and exemption to public records that I am not aware of unless I had a specific example.
The animal control piece is subject to public record, correct?
Oh, absolutely. Yes.
I got a question for you later after this meeting.
Sure.
Thank you.
The other option that we had looked into was potentially having the City of Palm Coast provide animal control. We did get a detailed breakdown of what that cost would look like. They were. They were interested in only doing the domestic animals, which would leave you needing to find a provider for non-domestic. When we looked at the cost for the City of Palm Coast, this had two animal control officers and one permit tech person. So it's a total of three people with some setup costs for capital and licensing and computers and things like that. We would still need, if we were going to try to fulfill apples-to-apples, we would still need the component for animal shelter services and then that spay or neuter program. When we looked at the makeup between domestic versus non-domestic, when you look at the number of animals that they pick up, it's about 8% of the animals are non-domesticated, so different types of wildlife, farm animals, things like that. I didn't have a good way of showing what that would be, so I just took whatever the cost of the annual contract was and looked at 8%, and that 8% equates to $17,000. So likely, we would have to pay somebody something to handle the non-domesticated. That's just kind of a plug number. And then looking at the animal shelter service with spay and neuter, that would be the same cost as being provided through the Humane Society.
A question, Ms. Petito. The $106,000, the spay and neuter program, is that paid by us and the City of Palm Coast pays that additionally?
So the spay and neuter program, it's really a rebate program. It's rolled into the billing for your animal shelter services. So it's a little misleading that you're not paying $106 for the spay and neuter. It depends on how many actually get spay or neutered during that reporting cycle. It's to allow $25 rebate for the activity of spay and neuter, but it's county-wide. It's always been county-wide.
So the $106,000 covers a $25 per animal rebate?
Correct.
Roughly about 4,200 animals. Sound right? That's all that's in that spay and neuter rebate?
I'd have to look. It's not, so the $106 is a combination of your animal shelter services with spay and neuter. Spay and neuter may only represent, you know, like $5,000 of the $106. I'd have to go out and see the breakdown.
Okay. So it, it really includes just other services, medical or?
Any services that they receive while being sheltered, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So then, looking at bringing it in, having Flagler County perform, again, looking at the method that Palm Coast used as far as adding two, potentially two, animal control officers, consistent with what we receive now at the Humane Society, as well as an additional staff person to help with some of the administrative, technical, clerical stuff. That's our cost of doing it in-house. We would do all animals, similar to what the Humane Society does, domestic and non-domestic. We would still need a provider for those animal shelter services, as well as that spay and neuter program. Again, if we were to keep it like-for-like, and then that cost just transfers over. There are some concerns, you know, with us taking it on, because it will involve some significant operational and financial legal responsibilities. This is not something we currently do, so it would probably take a little bit of time to get it set up, but we would be assuming full control over the staffing, the enforcement, community engagement. We would have some of those relatively high upfront costs for software, vehicles, equipment, potentially challenges in hiring or retaining staff, have to update some ordinances. We would be bearing the full liability for the incidents. So it's just eyes wide open, just kind of want to share it, that, you know, we would have to assume a lot of this responsibility. And I don't know if I mentioned it when we talked about Palm Coast, they would be looking at hiring staff, so they would not be looking at a one-year contract. That is the difference between, like, even if we were to say we were going to do it, we would be looking not to do it for one year, because if we're having to hire staff, we're not going to want to lay them off a year later. So it's a little bit different than comparing the Humane Society to the City of Palm Coast or us. So this is just really a roll-up of the costs. So looking at animal control, domestic and non-domestic, at the Humane Society, based on the new contract, is just over $214,000. That shelter, animal sheltering, spay and neuter is the same across the board at $106. So that brings their total just over $320,000. If we factor in Palm Coast's cost just to do domestic, adding in whatever that component would be for the non-domestic, brings them at just over $515,000. And then if you look at ours, at $350,000 with the spay and neuter, animal sheltering, we're at $456. It's just to provide apples-to-apples.
Question, does the City of Palm Coast number figure in, I know you said employees, but also like a fleet cost, or?
Ours, the City of Palm Coast and ours factor in two vehicles, as well as computers, radios, things like that.
Okay, so ours does as well. But ours doesn't account for any kind of like liability insurances or anything like that we think we may need?
Correct.
Okay.
Do, where, do, what does wildlife fit into this at all? Is this non-domestic? I, I'm just thinking about outside the box of a bear, an injured bear, or coyotes. You know, we've, we've got them around. I see them often, not a bear, but the other things. Is that included, or is that fish and wildlife? Is, is that where it, and how does that get divided, is something that I ask about, because I just don't know if that's part of these numbers or not.
For Palm Coast, it's not. For the Humane Society, it is built in there. For us, it would be built in there. I don't know who they use now as a local provider. I think that many times, their staff goes out, but then they're handed over possibly for rehab to another entity. We would look to maintain those same relationships with whoever's doing it now. Then the last component that we were tasked with was looking at the-
Right, I'm sorry, Ms. Petito. Could you provide me with the list again of non-personnel? You mentioned two vehicles, radios, computers.
We would have, hold on one second, I can pull it up.
Cell phones, yeah. And that would be a one-time startup, right? That's, that's more of a startup expense than an annual, annual expense?
You would have both, right? So you would have, like, in the way of software, you may have the initial software cost, which would be big, but then you're going to have recurring maintenance and things for that same software.
How did you figure that in? How did you figure that in?
So when we looked at it, I have, and I don't know if it was shared with you, but we have personnel, so we had two animal control officers, one code enforcement technician.
Can I, just a minute? How would it have been forwarded to us if you didn't forward it? Why is there no detail on this?
Well, it was, I furnished it into the agenda drive, but with the new process, I don't know what got linked. It's kind of getting into the weeds on the operational stuff that maybe it was not necessarily necessary to share, because to see that breakdown, I can go over it with you. You had three positions with salary and benefits. The total cost of staff was $187,339. When you looked at the operating costs, it took into account that you're going to have three employees that need to go to animal control officer certification and training. Somebody would have to go to code tech training. You had uniforms, you had field equipment, radio, tablet, laptop, office equipment, software, and some ongoing licensing. You'd have to develop workstation space, and then you're going to have vehicle repair, oil changes, miscellaneous maintenance to the vehicles. So the operating cost was about $57,000. And then if you look at the capital, you're going to have two vehicles at $53,000 apiece, so you have $106,000. And that's how our estimate came to that $350,339. Palm Coast is something similar. It may not have that detailed breakdown on the operating, they just lump it into one.
If I recall, they operate on three employees, correct?
They do. They were trying to match like-for-like when it came to level of service, so they were trying to match what's currently provided. They offered the same, two code, or animal control officers with one code tech. Their vehicle acquisition and maintenance is a little bit higher than ours. Their IT package is a little bit higher than ours. They factored in some overhead and workstations. That's how they got to the $392, but they didn't break it down into significant detail other than that.
They had significantly more animal intake, but we think we should match them on employees for two animal control and one care tech, or is that what they call it, a code care tech?
We, we shared the numbers that are currently being provided for service in the unincorporated, and we asked for them to mirror the level of service, so that you can have apples-to-apples. They came back with saying that they needed two animal control officers and one code tech.
Okay.
So the next thing that we looked at was what is the cost for animal shelter? So this is kind of just going over a concept and what some of those cost estimates would look like. I believe it was mirrored more along the line of Putnam and what they recently accomplished, although it does include air conditioning, where I don't think their shelters do. But what we looked at was creating 96, 96 dog kennels that would have covered runs. You would have an area for office space for the employees, which would include restrooms and a reception area for the public. You would have a designated area for processing incoming animals, as well as designated areas for grooming and quarantine of animals. And then you would have a section of cat kennels and cat condo area. It's kind of just a high level. Looking to the left, this is the Putnam County version of their intake office. Ours is very similar, it's a little bit smaller. We've kind of broken up that area a little bit differently, but basically covers the same components that they have in Putnam County. And then when you look at the conceptual design for the kennels, Putnam County is the one on the left. Ours would be the ones on the right. That way, they would have not just the five-by-five stall area, but we would also have a run for the animals attached to them that are covered. So each building would potentially have 24 kennels in them. So it's kind of like that picture, but you would have like a mirrored, it would be double, so you'd have those runs on the outside of both with a main corridor going down the This is another look at the conceptual design of what the kennels would look like. And this version of the building has that grooming and quarantine areas at the end. So again, you'd have 24 kennels, all of them having outdoor runs. You can kind of see the size of some of those, four-by-four for the smaller or medium dogs. I think it was five-by-five for the larger dogs. And then you'll have that 12-by-20 grooming station, 12-by-20 quarantine. So there's a lot of construction assumptions made. When staff took a look at this, they were looking at different information that they got from like Shelter Planners of America, as well as the Humane Society for the United States. So we were looking at office space estimated at $400 a square foot, climate-controlled kennel buildings that were going to be about $225 a square foot. We don't know where exactly this would be located, so there is not a cost for land in there. If we could put it somewhere where we own land, or potentially if we worked with the city, they, they may have some land available, so there's no land cost in here. We have a cost, estimated cost for some site work, anticipating that you'd have significant drains for some of that kennel waste, likely have to bring in some fill material. So we were looking at the cost for the office building to be somewhere around $960,000, and then having four different kennel buildings for a total cost of about $1.6 million. So when you look and roll it up, estimated cost for construction and FFNE, which is your furniture finishes and equipment, is going to be somewhere about $2.5 million. Site work, anticipating five acres to accommodate adequate parking, you'd have about $1.2. We don't know the land, so there's no cost there. So roughly, you're, you know, right around $3.8 million. And then that's it, really just whatever the next steps are, discussion, and if you have any other questions for me.
Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Hanson?
Yeah, where's the money coming from?
For the building. I think she just got us an estimate, just so we could know.
Yeah.
Yeah. We currently pay for animal control, so it's fine.
But the, but the money for the building?
Yeah. Well-
We could roll it into the half-cent sales tax.
While we're talking about the building, I had looked at this and thought this would be a good time to gather consensus on the building portion, because obviously, we don't have funds, but we could go ahead and place this on the capital improvements project list, so that it'd be a project that we could work towards that would have been identified. I don't know if that's something anybody wants to entertain right now, or in terms of discussion for the building itself. By putting it on there, one, it would keep future boards looking, and it doesn't mean that Flagler County has to operate it, a nonprofit could operate it. We could do a legislative ask for it at one point, at some point. I just think maybe we do recognize that there is a shortage of space in a growing county, so that somebody has to, to, to keep an eye out on that. So that was just my thought, if, if anyone's interested in at least identifying it as a capital improvement project to think of officially.
Do we have county land this could go on?
So I know that when I've talked to Ms. Petito previously about it, we have land in the City of Palm Coast, although it might not be perfect because of residential nearby. And I think there's $17,000 worth of square feet at the new library area, but other than that, I'm not sure of anything identified.
We have some on Aviation Drive, do we not? We have Aviation Drive?
Aviation Drive?
Yeah, at the airport, right before-
Finn, Finn Way?
Uh-huh.
Is that Finn Way? Is that what you're referring to, or?
Oh, well, we have Finn Way, yeah. But we also have, if you come in, if you come in off 100, there's a plaza, the airport plaza. Don't we have land right behind it?
Not that I'm aware of, not for, not where you could put this. Any land that's owned around the airport would either be used for aviation or non-aviation related activity. I can't think of any right now that is non-airside, other than off of Finn Way, but you have a lot of wetlands, we'd have to look at it.
Can I also ask, we, we have to start with 100 dogs? I mean, can't we start with 24 dogs? I mean, why, why exploit this to the highest level and not come somewhere in the, in the medium? Because I don't think we ever said that we were going to house every, every dog that's going to be dropped off in Flagler County. Why did we go all the way out to 100 dogs at a time?
I think they were just giving you components. You can split it in half. That's why they're giving you the cost per building up to 96. If you cut it in half, then you would just get half of that, half of the cost. The office building will be whatever the office building is.
Right, okay.
So obviously, we're not going to be able to address the building today because of, of all the different constraints and thoughts we have, but is, it's something that we want to see officially added to our capital improvement list at this time?
I do, for budgeting purposes, planning only.
Yeah, put it on the capital improvement list, I think. I mean, it's not something that's going to happen next year, but if it's on the list, at least every year, we can look at it.
And, and scope it, and, and, you know, see where we're going with animal control? Okay.
Well, what we should do is decide on what we, how, how much we want. And we don't have to go out for 3.7 million, right? I know we're growing, but we'd have to look at the-
Overall.
Additional, yeah, dogs, cats, whatever. But I think that's about three times bigger than what I envisioned a few months ago.
Well, and I think the other thing is, you know, because we don't know who would operate it, all those are future talks. This could just be a second- This could just be a second site to the Humane Society, so it may not need to be near as large, you know? So if we have a consensus, we can put it on to the capital improvement list, and then, you know, in the future, as we get closer to it, talk about scope and sizing. But she's, I think Ms. Carney's correct, that we don't necessarily, 3.7 million is just a large number for us to think about, but we could bracket that into half, you know, and look at maybe a smaller project. Thoughts, anyone, everyone okay with that? No opinion, Ms. Richardson?
None.
I think it'd be good to put the whole enchilada on there, but mark it up, you know, say that if you did the whole thing, this is what it would cost. But that's, that could be divided in fourths, you know? It could be a fourth of that, and a fourth, yeah.
That sounds like we'll go ahead and add it to our capital improvements list and work towards it. I did have a question about the City of Palm Coast number at 515,000. That included adding their new, like, new fleet, right, for our addition?
So I'll just pull it up on the screen. So the 392, 660, that is for them to do the animal control piece. And then if you add in their...
So this 515 is a...
We're trying to compare apples to apples, right? So we're looking at the total contract for Humane Society and all the services they provide, and then what is a comparable if it was provided through Palm Coast. So that's why, when you look at the animal control services, that's the piece provided by Palm Coast. They're not willing to do your non-domestic animals, so you would need somebody to do that if we were to continue to pick up the wildlife. So you have that cost estimated at the bottom. And then the sheltering services that are provided on the animals that are brought in, the city currently pays that piece direct to the Humane Society, just like we do.
The 392,000 is what will be year over year?
Right.
Or is it a one-time, and then their fleet would be discounted year two, year three?
You would probably see some of the capital costs come down, like the vehicles, but you're gonna have ongoing, you're gonna have, you know, your insurance, your maintenance and things like that. You may not have the computer costs, but you may have maintenance for software support and stuff like that. So you have some one-time cost built in there, and then some of those costs would drop off.
So we don't have the year after year number after the new cost, so we...
It wasn't provided by the city.
Okay, is that...
I just, Ms. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, whatever Chair, I believe the City of Palm Coast already has vehicles to bring up animals, so that's included in this, correct?
I'm sorry, say that again.
They have, they have one or two vehicles right now, currently, that they use for animal control.
I believe they have at least two. They were looking at adding two more, because think of the distance that they would have to go all the way out west, that if they had a call, say in Palm Coast, those vehicles may or may not be tied up to be able to go out west.
Okay.
So the 106,000 we'll pay regardless of what plan you go with, that's there. 392,000 to the City of Palm Coast is year one. It could be less, or will be less, because this includes startup costs, for lack of a better word. And then we have the 17,000 on the non-domestic animals, that's, we're not sure who would be handling that. Could be, we don't even know if it would be our ag officer, or anyone like that, sheriff's office.
I don't believe he responds now.
Yeah. You know, he asked me, he used to do these things out there. Apparently, at some point, we took away where they would store animals at the fairgrounds, like the horses and cows. And he actually asked, had mentioned, is that a possibility to get some little area back, which it might be when we're doing 4-H barns. It's not every day, you know, he's picking up cows or horses out there, but it is something that they perform with the animals out there. They just have nowhere to bring them any longer. Years ago, where they took them was removed. Now, it's my understanding of it from him. It's hard to make a decision on the City of Palm Coast number without knowing what year two estimated would actually be. It could be a drastic swing once they get up and running with a fleet in place, so difficult for me to decide on this one.
Without any data, again, it's hard to say any of this, but I cannot believe, after seeing the presentations that we've had, that our animal control is running at the same pace as the Palm Coast animal control. It can't be. There's no physical way it can be, it can be running at the same pace. It's just a little discerning that I don't have data. I just, I think we need to table this. When is, when do we do to renew with the animal shelter, with the Humane Society?
It ends the end of September of this year.
I think we need to thank Ms. Petito for her presentation and table this for discussion with some more data. I don't have enough data. And number two, I'd like to look at it during the budget process.
Any other questions from our commissioners, before I go out to public comment? All right, seeing that, I will call for public comment. This 30-minute time period has been allocated for public comment. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to address the commission. Speakers should approach the podium, identify themselves, and direct comments to the chair. Good afternoon, please say your name for the clerk.
Wendy Tramarchi, I'm in District Three. So I had this whole thing written in it. I can say the same thing I've been saying for the whole last year. I'm just gonna bring up a couple of things that are still not legal, incorrect. There is no independent audit from this agency, from this nonprofit, which is state-mandated with donations over a million dollars a year, which they do get. Also, as a government entity that gives them money, you can require, you can ask them to, in your contract with them, that you want to see an independent audit every year, which they should do on their own anyway. This isn't something they should be asked for. Health Department has mandates for, if they euthanize a dog for suspected rabies, or if an animal does in fact have rabies, they're supposed to be called, they're supposed to be notified. That has happened at this Humane Society, and the Health Department has never been notified. Right now, just right now, they are consistently overcrowded, and there are dogs in household crates 24/7 in their meeting room, because there is nowhere for them to go. Other non, and there's another nonprofit in town that had to rescue 12 dogs over the last several weeks from Hargrove. We all know where Hargrove is, where everybody just dumps animals. Why are people dumping animals at such a high rate right now? And that's just 12 that were found. Because in order for an owner surrender, they have to wait approximately two weeks for an appointment and pay a cost for that privilege. No money, and in dire straits, they have no choice but to dump. So if someone has no money, no way to keep their animal, they're gonna keep them for another two weeks, they're probably moving. They're probably homeless, they're probably going into someplace that won't take their animal, maybe their animal is sick, whatever it is, they can't wait two weeks. Infrastructure, the infrastructure in the county, we know by me sitting here listening to everything, that there's not enough money for a lot of things we're doing. But infrastructure, when you're allowing building the way the county and the city are, is not just schools and government buildings and roads. It also includes your animals and a building for them to go. Animals should not be in a small house crate 24/7, because there's an agency housing them that we're paying taxes to, that have not looked to the future, had a fund development staff to be able to get enough money. Nothing has been done in that building for years and years and years. Because you love animals does not mean that you can run a great agency, and it starts with the board. We've all seen that. We all know what kind of attitude we get back from this board. That's where your problem is, and it will not be viable until that changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon, Anne Thompson. It's time that we figure out the proper means of making the changes our animals deserve. The current approach, particularly the focus on securing the cheapest contract for animal control and shelter services, raises serious concerns about the quality of care provided to our animals. While cost efficiency is important, it should never come at the expense of well-being of our animals. The alarming reports of dogs being shot and left without proper veterinary care, including pain management, highlight the inadequacy of the current system. It is distressing to witness animals in desperate need of help being neglected due to lack of resources and oversight. Our community deserves a transparent and reputable animal control system that prioritizes the welfare of all animals. We need a shelter that operates under the city or county's direct oversight, ensuring accountability for the treatment of animals and the staff responsible for their care. The need for a new shelter is not a matter of if, but when, and it should be a facility that embodies compassion, safety, and professionalism. If we truly care about the animals in our community, I urge the council to reconsider the current direction and prioritize the quality of care for our animals over the pursuit of low-cost contracts. Our pets deserve far better than to be sold short. Thank you for your attention on this critical matter. I hope to see meaningful change that reflect our community's commitment to animal welfare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Kathy Sarris. One problem I have is with their transparency. I don't know, if you have nothing to hide, why not be transparent? And I know they've gotten a couple more board members, which I think are beneficial for the animals. I think I've seen a change in attitude on some of those, because they were pretty well-behaved when I came in. But, you know, to table this, I don't think that's a question, you know? You need to move on with it. There's local rescues in the area that, they don't have any buildings, any brick and mortar, but they're reaching out to residents to foster, and now those fosters are full. Even your city animal control officers, you know, have connections with some of the local rescues. We're, and I'm part of that, and we're just doing everything we can to keep the animals from being in that shelter. Some of the dogs are the most vulnerable, are the ones that lived in loving homes, and they're either abandoned up in Hargrove or in residential areas, and they're scared. They've never had to fend for themselves. They're used to being loved. And when they go to the shelter, they're put in a small area, one of their kennels, sometimes in the offices, sometimes in a bathroom, sometimes in a kennel, sometimes with one dog, sometimes with more than one dog. And they had a playgroup, but I've heard they terminated the guy who ran the playgroup. That was like one great outlet for them dogs to get out and socialize and exercise with each other. Why did they terminate him? Maybe he spoke up too, like all of us did. And I just think, you know, this is very urgent to just table it. It needs to be done right away. We don't need another library, I think we have two already, you know? Do we need another skate park? Save lives, those you can't replace. And our county and our city is growing, and they're bringing more animals. This'll create jobs, too. And I'm sure you'll get a lot of volunteers. I know about eight or 10 of them right here that would step up to help. I would even do fundraising to help with anything that we can, and we're all on that same board. So give it a second thought, and please put it in your capital improvement. Thank you.
Any other speakers on this topic? Mr. DeSantis?
Nick DeSantis here, you all know me. I'd like to just say, whatever decision you make, I believe in every one of you up here. I trust you will make the right decision. I actually pray you make the right decision. And I've worked with a lot of people in this room behind me, and I believe that we have the right people in the right places, but we just have to make some serious changes, especially in the area where they hire people and pay them. Other than that, I really have no issues, other than some of the rumors that are going around. I don't know if they're true or not, but those also need to be cleared up. Other than that, I know you guys are gonna make the best decision, whatever it is. God bless you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to come up and relay the importance of a...
Can you say your name for the record?
Sorry, Caroline Johnson, Smart Animal Rescue. We've been hit with many dump dogs in the area lately. Our rescue alone has went out and rescued, not taken in from other people who have rescued. We've went out and put the work in to get the dogs on Hargrove safe. There's other dumping areas, but Hargrove is a big issue right now. We've taken in 12 dogs in the last six, seven weeks from Hargrove. Some of those very scared dogs that were dumped took me probably about 40 hours in a week of being out there in the heat, rain, mud, local businesses on Hargrove helping us use ATVs to ride the wooded areas to look for areas to set traps. Some of these dogs would not go in traps, because they've lived in crates or outside in crates most of their life. Some of them were too big to go in a crate. They're over 100 pounds, the cane corso's we rescued. Very fearful. I was able to use a puppy to gain the trust of one of the females who was bred before she was dumped, but the male cane corso took me about two weeks to catch him. The second week it took the Sheriff's Department, who was very, very, very helpful with helping us to get him. One of them even came out and flew drones to try to see if we can locate his hiding area, because it's such a big wooded area. We have no place to house the animals. We're doing the best we can. A lot of our fosters have two or three dogs right now, and doing the best they can to keep them separate until we really test personalities. So I'm just hoping that we can find a way to come together. Any support that I can be to help raise the funding for facility or anything else, I would be more than happy to do it. We do need a place for strays. I know you mentioned taking in strays, or criminal cases, animal control cases, but not owner surrenders. I would do anything to support that, whether it mean helping raise funds for those animals, helping cover the vetting for them, helping get the dogs adopted, whatever I can do as a volunteer, I would do it to continue to help the animals. It's crucial that we find a place to house the animals, and I understand the funding is important, like Mr. Hanson said, but we have to be able to find a way. We find a way for every other project, we need to find a way for the animals as well. 11, 12 dogs in a matter of a few weeks in one area that doesn't cover the other areas that we've taken in dogs. So please, I urge you to find a way to do that for them. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments for public? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public comment, come back to the board. I'll start with my overall concerns. Background checks, they said they'll do a level-two background check on animal control officers. I don't know if that's on a yearly basis, one-time basis, and same with the volunteers, and then what would be the board's input, particular to the animal control officers, if there's an issue arise? Will we have any say in whether or not they remain employed? I don't know if we know that or not.
Commissioner, they serve as your animal control officer at your pleasure? In terms of them being an employee of that nonprofit, that's up to the nonprofit.
Okay, so at any time... Okay, so at any time, we'll be provided the level two background check and anytime there's an issue with it, it could be brought to the board for determine if we want them to continue to remain enrolled or is that-
The way the contract is written now presently, in draft form, the background check is a one-time, sort of like an employment screening when you first hire someone. And if the board prefers that it be done periodically, annually, biannually, we can add that in.
So that was a concern. Two, not being allowed to have our liaison at the actual membership meeting concerns me. We are all members of nonprofits, we serve on nonprofit boards, we attend their meetings, we're not briefed afterwards about what occurred. So I take particular interest to that. I don't like that we can't have our staff member at the actual meeting. So whatever it would take to get to that. I can't make a decision, I'll tell you why I feel like I can't make a decision. I lean towards it remaining with the county or the city, but I feel the city of Palm Coast number may vary if that has one-time costs associated lumped into the estimated cost. So I'm not sure there. And same with ours, is our estimated cost also lump in those one-time new onboarding costs to get the program up and running? And then two, we don't know exactly what kind of insurance we'd have to acquire and then what would that cost be as well? And then also, three, with Flagler County taking animal control, how long do you really need to actually get a program like that up and running? You know, do we need to give you another year? Do we need to contract out another year, you know, so that you can build out that program? That's my concern. As for the capital project, I'm glad that we can move forward and at least get that listed and start scoping and coming to some conclusions so that stays within our sight. It may be something that we can get through a legislative, doesn't mean we have to operate it, it could be a nonprofit that operate it, but over, once we get past who does animal control, we're still going to be coming up against, there's no space for the animals and there is no actual plan to develop space for the animals. Whether we continue to part with the Humane Society, whether we do it on our own, that is going to be a continuing theme within the county and we do need to help plan for that if they're not going to be able to. So that's, I'm happy that we can get some sort of consensus to look at, you know, at least scoping a project like that and determining who should operate it and where funds will come. And that obviously would be something in the future, but it's good to go ahead and identify it now so we can help work towards that. So that's my, I don't know how to make a decision because I fear those estimated costs for us may include one-time, it may not be the true cost. And so that's my thought. Anyone else?
Yeah, a couple of things. I think on the security check, it should be a level two, but I think we should take the next step and then annually just do a records check, which I think is type one, level one, just because that's easy to do, doesn't cost much, and it's just a check, just go see how they're doing. The other thing with the board, I think we have to have somebody on that board. And we, the five of us, sit on boards all over the county. And I don't know what anybody's afraid of having one of us or one, somebody from the staff on that board because, I mean, that's what we do, we do it every week. I sit on a board at least once every week, sit on some board. So I think that's really important. The other thing is if we're really serious about this, then we ought to start putting money away each year into a fund to do this. It's sort of like beach replenishment. If we don't put something away every year, it'll never get done. So if we're serious about it, then we need to do that. And it doesn't have to be a million dollars every year, but even if you start putting $100,000 a year and just start building up that kitty, I think that would go a long way towards making somebody like the state legislature serious that we're serious about doing this. Because I think as the chair said, we're going to ask for this, we'll ask for it next year. We'll see if, I think, if we all agree, it'll be one of our asks to see if we could get an animal shelter built. And I'm not sure what the stomach is up in Tallahassee for doing that, but if we, we have to show that we got a little money in the game. So I think we should, and that's something we'll have to discuss at budget talks, but it seems to me that we ought to start making the pot, start building the pot up. So that's all I got.
I don't have much to say, I've got a lot of thinking to do about this. We've got a lot of new information and I take this very passionately because I'm an animal fanatic. But I want to thank Caroline, Caroline, just for what you said today. It did mean a lot. Your statement was quite powerful and I respect what you're doing and I thank you for your volunteer work and your offers to fundraise. I think one of the biggest problems we have is not publicly letting the public know. And unfortunately, this is a small group that has been really fighting all of you folks here and of course, the Humane Society as well. We all have one mission, is to help these animals that are suffering, right? That's the bottom line of it all. And so we have to work together. And I think if we did some out-of-the-box new things, we might get new results. And that could be a great start for the funding, rather than expect the state or the county or the federal government to concern about our animals. This is our community, I think we can do more with it. And I'm hoping that we can get some coordinated efforts. That's where I see we could get a start and maybe we can get things better, because we always want to make things better, right? And that's all I can say. Again, I'm going to do some more research and do some more follow-up. So thank you for your attendance here today, appreciate it.
Yeah, real quick, Mr. Moreland, is there anything in the current contract with the Humane Society that deals with exclusivity?
You mean like confidential information?
No. Are they the exclusive provider of-
No, sorry, I misunderstood. No, we can contract with someone else at the same time.
Okay. So I would like to see us move towards the county taking over code animal control. Mr. Orr has provided us with copious information. I asked him to hold on to it before until the timing was right. Policies and procedures, how to train them, what to do, how to get this thing done. I don't think we need a year in order to get two animal control people up and running. It will be a added staff. I don't know that we don't have, I'm sure that there's a special vehicle involved. I don't know quite what it looks like, but we're probably going to need to put a vehicle in there, but I think other than that, I am in agreement in setting aside donated land for any potential future animal control shelter or animal shelter. We did it, we gave it to the Humane Society, we can do it for ourselves or for anyone else in this community that wants to operate one. I would like to see the current SMART program, do some fundraising, get serious, help us the best they can, but I do not believe that the Humane Society has to be the sole provider. Again, we came here several months ago with animal control as our focus and that's what we have to deal with first, is animal control. So I'm not stalling on this decision. What I merely meant was, we don't make decisions at workshops, we simply discuss. So I would like more data, I would like more data on our program, not Palm Coast. It would be great to do business with Palm Coast, but I don't know that that's a long-term solution. I don't see Palm Coast projecting a shelter. I think Palm Coast is okay with what's going on, I don't know, but we got to take the lead on this. And just for the record, none of this is statutorily required of us. We're doing this because we want to. There's no statute that says we have to. So other than controlling bad animals or dogs or whatever, we're doing this because we want to do it. But we can't make it happen in a day or two days or six months or a year. We need to plan, like Commissioner Hanson said. We got to put something away every year. As the plan grows, the financing grows, then we go with it. But I am okay with donating land, I am okay with working with SMART or any other animal group that wants to help us get this thing off the ground. And I do want to try to bring animal control under the county.
So do we want to bring this decision back for the July 2nd pending some further numbers? Because I think one of the things we're missing is, I would like to know what the year two numbers are for the city of Palm Coast, just to see if that number drops, so I can compare it to, in year two for Flagler County, just so I can get an idea between the two. And then also, realistically, how long would it take for us to even start a program like that? Do we need to contract for another year with the Humane Society or do we need to, or, you know, is that something we're going to have to do? Because I imagine this couldn't be done-
Well, we can't stop right now. I think we're not in the middle of a stop right now.
Well, our contract's up in November, September?
It coincides with our fiscal year, so it'll start October 1. Now, the contract, we're going on an annual contract, but it can be terminated with four months' notice. So if we were midway through the year and once we figure out how long it takes to get an officer trained and we needed to adjust that contract with the Humane Society, we do have a way to do it mid-year.
Okay. So I think, just need a little more information before we can come to a consensus, so whether or not it be a county.
And last time we had a joint with the city and the city is not here today, the city of Palm Coast, right? So they weren't-
Yeah, they gave us this data and I think that when they step back in, it would be maybe the discussion around the actual shelter itself, whether or not they want to be a partner to it or have land to donate.
If we do a joint situation.
Yeah, that would be like a future with the city.
I don't want to exclude them.
Things I'm interested in is year two costs for county versus city. As you continue to work on, because we don't know whether or not we're going to have to enter into a contract with the Humane Society until we are able to build out a program, if that's the way we go. I'm also interested in making sure that the background checks are provided to us and also annually and just in the verbiage. And then if, I think you agreed with that, you thought it should be the one, background one for the yearly after that?
Every year, yeah.
Every year. And then finally, having a representative at the actual meeting, whether or not that takes to have to have a non-disclosure or something like that, NDAs or something, perhaps that's possible. Other than that, I don't think we, I'm leaning towards it going with city or county. If you need to know that information, that's where I lean towards. And I think that's, we'll have to make that decision when we get some more information. If we could have it back by, everybody comfortable with it coming back on the July 2nd so it's done within budget? Yep? Okay. So if we could get that information back July 2nd, would that be okay with you? So we're looking for, what would year two look like for city versus county? How long would it take for you to start a program? And then are you able to work out contractually, should we go that path on the background checks and attendance at meetings?
And could I just add, give us a timeline for when you could get two animal control officers up and running?
Yeah, I think the animal control-
We haven't made that decision yet.
No, I think she's just asking how long would it take if we went that path, right? Yes, yeah. I believe it's a 40-hour class, but-
So just to recap, contractually, looking at the things of interest, which would be frequency of background checks, level two to begin with on animal control officers, level one ongoing, kind of as a maintenance to see where they're at and you want copies of those?
Provided to us, yes.
And then representation on the board, whether it's an elected official or staff. Because I thought when we met, they agreed to having staff on there, but I can verify that with them. It may be a different conversation than the one that Sean had with their representative that's an attorney. And then breakout one-time versus recurring on Palm Coast and Flagler County's estimates. We can also include an inflation factor, COLA or CPI in the out year, so you can kind of see that where it forecasts. And then replacement of capital over the same timeframe. And then how quickly can it occur to be able to bring these services online? I don't know so much if it would be the recruitment and training of the personnel as much as it would be the vehicle. I don't know what the lead time is on those specialized vehicles, so we'll do our best to provide everything back to you for July 2nd.
What if we had some people that did fit into those guidelines but had their vehicles already? If they had, you know, if there's somebody that has already, you know, has the vehicles or the wherewithal to do it, would that-
So contracting out with another provider other than us or?
No, somebody who's, you know, if the equipment is available.
For us to borrow or buy or-
Might get a used one, we don't know, she's, right?
I'm just saying, if I own an RV and I use it for helping animals and I'm licensed and capable to be a code, you know, an officer to pick it up, would that not reduce our factor to getting this going?
Well, I think it depends on how we structured it. Would these people become our employees and then they're using their personal equipment to perform work on behalf of the county? I don't know if they could legally do that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking outside the box again as usual, so.
We'll look at the different alternatives.
Like I said, I've got some thinking to do. Thank you.
Okay. Everything clear? We're all good? All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Can I?
Or adjourn.
No.
No, go.